Hey Mayor, we are live streaming and we're recording, so we are ready to go whenever you're ready.
Great, alright. Well then I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. I see we have Councilmember Matt Blackstone, Councilmember Phil Clemmer, Councilmember John Mahoney, Councilmember Anthony Cunningham, Councilmember Jay Thomason, and Councilmember A.J. Derryberry. Everyone is here on Zoom, so we do have a full quorum. So we called meeting to order. Councilmember Blackstone, would you like to lead us in the invocation?
Sure will. Please pray with me. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us. We thank you for the rain, the sunshine you sent our way. Lord, I ask you to continue to protect our city, our employees, our leaders with the COVID-19 that's going on. Continue to protect our country, our state, and its leaders. Lord, give us knowledge and wisdom to make the right decisions, to do what you want us to, and please forgive us where we fail you. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Everyone, please say the pledge along with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
You all, today is the Thursday, April 30th, Budget Workshop for the City of Fountainhead. Mr. Bell, did you want to, before we get to hospitality, tax grant applications, any sort of housekeeping for those doing a presentation today with the Zoom platform? Like, are you gonna mute them?
Yeah, I will mute everybody but the speaker. Debbie, are you still okay to go first, or would you like Whitney to?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, so yes, I will have everybody muted. Alright, everybody is muted other than Ms. Debbie Alphon.
Thank you. First, I want to thank the council for allowing us to do this. I know it's a little out of our norm to be able to have the Zoom conferencing, but I do appreciate you allowing me the time to come and speak with you today. Because of the COVID-19, to be honest with you, we need the council's support now more than ever. You will probably know that because of COVID-19, we have lost all of our funding right now with our rentals, our shows, all the income that normally comes into the center. So at this particular time, the funding from the city is all we have until the governor opens us back up. And I want to say thank you so much for your support over the last three years, because without your support from the council, there's no way the Yacht Center could have survived. I know many of you were here when we took over in 2017. There was a big outcry from the public to keep the center alive, and that's what we came in to do. Some of you remember, it was a little tricky there to begin with, but over the last three years, we have kept a very good rapport with the city and the city employees. I'm not sure if y'all are really aware of that. But, so we've spent these last three years trying to make it Fountainhead. We have worked with the city, like we've hosted their parties, their retirement parties, their Christmas events, any of the council meetings or meet the candidate things, and we've even given our center to the Christmas this year. We had our Christmas, the city's Christmas, I guess it was their market, the Christmas market we had. So we tried to tie a lot with the city to work together, and I will say, because of the city's support to us, all the things that we have worked with over the last three years with the city, the Yacht Center has not charged anything to the center for those events. So we've been trying to partner together with it, and what I hope we will find is, my thing is, we aren't the city having an event, we aren't the chamber having an event, we are the um the man we are the yacht are having an event. What we want everybody to see is we are Fountainhead, and that we're Fountainhead and try to offer the citizens into our community. So I think that's our main goal too, is to project the image that we are united, that we are one, we are Fountainhead, and everything that we do is going to bring entertainment, enjoyment, all different things to our city here. And it's very important that we show everybody that we are all on board together. That being said, it brings us to, the city has been graciously, over the last three years, we had worked out an agreement where we received $200,000 a year on a monthly basis, which was roughly $16,000 a year in, I mean, a month, in funds from the city, and that has helped to keep us alive. If many of you know, when we started out, we didn't have a single show. We didn't have a show, we didn't have a rental. We walked into the center, I had a key to the door and my personal cellphone, and we had to start from scratch with shows, with computers, with ticketing systems, with everything. So we started over, so I think we have done really well to build a good reputation in our town. Our staff has worked extremely hard, you know, to make sure that every show and everything that happens in that center is quality. And, and so that's, I know you have your applications in hand. One question that was asked was, why did we request more money than what we had initially been given before? That particular reason was because when the application was submitted, the application gave us specific guidelines to go by to determine that budget. So that's what we did. If, the pages where it says our total projects and costs, we went through everything that we were having on the schedule. Now, those are in-house production shows, and those are shows that we have people from the community involved in. Our local theater produces it, we have a director, we have a choreographer. If any of you have been to the center, I think you'll know how professional what we've put on that stage is. We've had letters from people saying, "I've attended performances all over the upstate." When we did Hunchback of Notre Dame, people came in and said, "That was better than Hamilton that they saw at the Peace Center." We've been very, very proud of what we've accomplished. So the reason that number was the 283 number is that's where we put in there what the shows and the budget actually costs. Many people may not realize, but when we get ready to put a show on, the rights to the show are unbelievable. The rights for the show can be anywhere from five to eight, $10,000, just for the rights to produce that show. And then you've got all your director's costs, and your choreography costs, and your costumes, and the people that work diligently behind the stage for us. So there's a lot of cost that goes into putting a musical on. For instance, Hunchback of Notre Dame was our most expensive, and it was over $60,000 to produce that show. A lot of our shows run in the $35,000 range, but that's just, that's what it costs to make, to put the quality of shows on that we have done here. And we thought we had to do, come out with really good shows, because we didn't want people to say, "Oh, their, their quality there is not as good," or, "They are not what we expected." So we had to come out of the gate strong as we could to be able to show them that we are a leader in the community for performing arts as concerned, and that we do have the staff and the quality. And I think that shows, because like on our attendance and things that we've had, I think sadly enough, the attendance had dropped off greatly with maybe 50 people coming to a show before we took over. Our average attendance now per show is over 300 per show. So I think that has shown that we have grown, we have marketed, the word has gotten out. I think one thing that was questioned was the advertising budget, which was roughly $55,000. But without telling people about that show, and without getting the advertising out there, we aren't going to be able to put people in seats. So that's how we draw, and that's how we've drawn people to put in there. We've had to advertise. The cost of advertising is not cheap. It's one of our highest expenses. But one thing I want you to know too, is people would tell us when people came in, so I think we're bringing a great amount of people to the community, and that's what the hospitality tax is all about, is driving people to come to Fountainhead and to come to our restaurants, and our theaters, and our ballparks, and our rest, and our shopping. We want people to know Fountainhead as a great place to live. I'm from Fountainhead originally, so I tell them at the Yacht Center, I started first grade in that building, so I tell them I started my career here, and I hope to end my career here. So I never real, never dreamed, my wildest dreams, that I would be back at the Yacht Center when I walked in that first grade, and my first piano recital was on that stage. Never did I think I would be back here again. But I am proud to be back. I am proud to be back in town, and I'm proud to work with this town to get us where we need to be. Some of the facts and figures that we're going over, there's a sheet in there if you'll see, they want to know how we compensate our, actually, sales and the number of people that came to the center. If you'll see in your report, there's a Vindini report. That Vindini report tells me some good things, good and bad. One, as far as hospitality is concerned, this shows the number of that we had for the last three years since we started with Vindini, actually, it's probably about two and a half years. And it tells us percentage of where it came from. And if you'll, the center percentage came over eighty, right, 84.4% of the people that came to the Yacht Center was outside of the 29644 zip code. Now, that tells me we've done a really good job at bringing people into town. We brought them into town to see the shows, we brought them into town to eat. The restaurants can tell us, we know when you're having a show, because, you know, maybe even to have some later hours, because a lot of people leave the show, go to Simpsonville. So the, the good part of that is eighty, roughly eighty-five percent of the people we brought into Fountainhead is from another area. The sad part of that is, is only 15.6% of our total ticket sales was from Fountainhead. That tells me we, as the center and as the town, need to really market what we have to our people in Fountainhead. But we did have people come in, example, Mary Ann Phillips, I love her to death, she came to the shows, and all the shows, and she kept saying, I sat there and saying, "I'm in Fountainhead. I am really in Fountainhead. I'm seeing the show in Fountainhead," and that's what we want to hear. People are just absolutely amazed at the quality of what we've brought to this town. And, and that's true with other theaters. One thing that we are faced with is competition. Unfortunately, there's a lot of competition out there, and we kind of checked with a lot of the other surrounding places. You know, Malden has just renovated their theater there. The thing with Malden is they're 100% supported by their city. So their funding, their shows, their rights, their salaries, everything are paid by there. Our staff, to be honest with you, is not a highly paid staff. If you look at the budget from the, I pulled the budgets from 2016 and 17, 15 from the city, you know, our staff is probably paid half of what they were. We do not have insurance, we do not have 401K, we do not have benefits. And making that place, I can say that everybody's step foot in there has put their heart and soul into this center, and we want to continue. But to do that, we do need the city's support. We need the city to stay with us and say, "Hey, we love having this center, and we're proud of it in Fountainhead." Simpsonville, they own their theater there too, they support that. Talk with Newberry, as a matter of fact, we can do the same kind of things Newberry does. But the city of Newberry gives them $283,000 towards the salaries of their employees. And then the city of Newberry also offers $105,000 towards the operations. So the city of Newberry is right at $400,000 a year that they give to the Newberry Opera House, because I hear that a lot, "Well, if y'all can't be like Newberry Opera House, can't y'all do it? Look what they're doing down there." And they can, but they're, they're getting $400,000 in support from their city leaders. And the, in spite of, of the shows that we put on, and I think this is true with any theater, your ticket sales are not going to cover the cost of the shows. So your ticket sales, you may, on our outside acts, we may come close to breaking even, or making $1,000, $2,000 off an event, but for our main stage productions, main stage productions is, the numbers just aren't there for ticket sales to cover, because we've tried to keep our ticket sales reasonable, where people can come to a $20 or $25 show. We aren't a $150 show, like going to the Peace Center, or a $400 show to the Peace Center. But we've put the quality on that stage, and we're proud of it, and we hope that everybody here in Fountainhead is proud of what we've done also. Looking at the budgets and things, and I went back and say, like, for instance, the city's budget before, from the end, the budget for the Yacht Center was $722,424 in '16, and it was $626,000 in 2017. So the budgets that I looked at there, we have tried to stay way under. People ask a lot of times, I know one of the questions that y'all ask is, "Why are y'all not self-sufficient now?" And that's why I wanted to bring these items to your attention and let you know. I know some people said, you know, as far as applying for grants and things, which we do, we do that on, we do that on a regular basis. We have gotten some. Some we get, some we don't, so we have, we have done that. The, one of the main things is the building that behind us, it was an eyesore to this town, really eyesore. So we did get some grant money from the city, helped us with that, with Lawrence Electric. And if you haven't been by, we have totally renovated that building, and now it will be turned into an early childhood development center. But if you see the outside now, how gorgeous it is, and how it blends with the library and the center and stuff, we've turned that into something to really be proud of. We will not get income from that fully until March. We will get a partial income starting in September, and then in March of next year, we will get, we will get our full monthly rent on it. But we made a lot of concessions. We had to have, we made about $65,000 in concessions that had to go there. That total renovation project back there was around $150,000 to $160,000. But we're hoping that that's something that, that everybody can be, you know, really proud of. We've had a dedicated actors, we've had dedicated staff, volunteers have been absolutely wonderful. So we've seen people from this community come and put their heart and soul into it too. And every day, we say, "We're so glad that y'all continued this Yacht Center," and they're so proud of the place to come. Another source of income that we have, people were asked, you know, why we weren't producing more incomes, but we looked at the city's budget, and in rentals, the city had looked at, I think they had $14,500 in their rental income that came in. Our staff has worked hard to take every place that we have there and be able to turn it to a space so we can be supportive of ourselves. The first year, um, one of those, look at me, have these backwards right quick. But the rental income, the first year that we had it, we were able to pull, let's see, from the $14,000 that they had predicted, I believe we were in the $30,000 on the rental income. We actually have already done spaces out to parties, weddings, rehearsal dinners. Our last, let's see, our 2018, we took that $14,000 that the city had done in the years past, and we had over $92,000 in rental income, $92,372 in our rental income. And then, that first year was $27,000, I'm sorry, I kind of had those out of order. So, and then I think our last year was around, was $129,000. So we have been working aimlessly and tirelessly to be able to raise money and to keep that center going. Like I said, we're facing really trying times now, because all of our shows had to be canceled, any rental income we had in had to be refunded. And, and so we, we need the city to stay with us and support us now, more than we, more than we ever had before. We've become, hopefully it'll last a lifetime that people won't know, we want to be the hub of Fountainhead. So we want to be the hub of Fountainhead, and we want to work together with our city, our city leaders, our staff, our chamber, our museum, our garden clubs, music clubs. We want to be a place that they can come to have, that they can come and have a place to gather with friends, see good quality shows, and it's been very family entertainment. There's always something for everyone. We have dance recitals there, we have church services, we have government functions, we have our productions, and we have outside travel performances coming in. Our theme at the center, that's what we call, so this right here, "Watch Us Shine." This has been our brochure that we've had last year, we did performances in here, but "Watch Us Shine" is our theme. And so from "Watch Us Shine," what we like to do is, we want to continue that, and we want the city and the people here in town to be part of that, and we want to watch Fountainhead shine, as well as the Yacht Center. So I thank you all for listening to me and performance. I know you'll have some questions, and I'll be glad to try to answer those as best I can. But we need your support to continue. I am so happy that we've been able to do this. And I did mention to Sean, and though sometimes, you know, I said roughly, "How many people do we have in Fountainhead?" And he said roughly 10,000. And I'm thinking, well, we were asking for 200,000, that's $20 a person, and like, where else can you go? If you gave everybody in town $20, what could they do with that $20? They couldn't see, go to a movie and buy popcorn and a coat for 20 bucks. And so for, if you think about it, and you put it in those terms of what our community is, and if the city is willing to help us in terms of $20 a person, look at what we can provide for them in the facility we have, and all the things that we can bring to this town. So we're glad to be a part of it. We hope you'll continue your support with us, and thank you so much for your time, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Alphon. We have time for a, for a few, few questions. We have two other applicants we've got to also hear from. And I think just for process, I should have mentioned this at the onset, Sean had mentioned to me that staff is ultimately looking for, for, for some, some guidance from council that could come after everyone is done with their presentation, and we can, you know, email individual, individual stuff to, to staff as well, for them to compile everything. But does anyone have any questions for Ms. Alphon at this time?
Yes, I do.
Yes, sir. Mr. Cunningham?
Hi, I'm Mr. Cunningham.
Great. Okay, Ms. David, I was, I was listening to your presentation, which was well presented, but when I looked at the numbers of participation from Fountainhead, it's a very low turnout compared to others that's coming to our city. So basically, the funds that you all have requested me to keep the Yacht Center rolling, based on the attendance from our town within itself, and the lack of participation, the citizens are the ones who are really, that's going to be your taxpayers to be able to help support this, correct?
Now, the hospitality tax, as I understand it, is from revenue that is seen, gotten from the city and from people coming in from outside the city. So most of your hospitality taxes, when we're bringing people into town, that is increasing your hospitality tax, and that's where the hospitality tax is coming to. And, and we want more people in town to participate. And the big thing now is to get everyone out, get the word out, see what we have, so we can bring more people in the town to participate in the Yacht Center. So it's kind of a double-edged sword right there. We want to bring people into town, and that's what hospitality tax is all about.
Okay. Oh, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it, Mr. Cunningham.
Any other council member have a question or comment?
I had a question.
Yes, sir. Mr. Blackstone?
Um, do y'all still have, like, any type of rentals, like rental space, or anything that anybody's, as a source of income at all anymore?
Right this particular minute with us closed, you know, per order of the governor, we have no rentals coming in at all. We do rent, normally, we have a dance studio that rents upstairs, we have a church that rents from us on Sunday mornings, and then we have, like, people that are coming in for weddings, rehearsal dinners, birthday parties. And I will say, and Mr. Cunningham too, a lot of our people, those were ticket sales numbers. A lot of our people, though, that are coming in to rent the space for their son or daughter's event, or their grandparents' wedding anniversary stuff, those are Fountainhead people. So the Fountainhead people are supporting us greatly with the rental income. The ticket sales from some of the shows have, have not been as, the percentage, but that's good that we're bringing people in from other places. But people are saying, "Now we have such a very nice facility here to rent, they're going to rent here for their, for their rehearsal dinner, or a wedding, or stuff. They're going to rent here now instead of going to Gringle." So that's good that we're people here, because then they're using our local florists, they're using our local caterers. So they're using a lot of people that are here locally when they are participating in Fountainhead. Does that answer what you mean? Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir. Mr. Clemmer?
Debbie, this is Phil Clemmer. How active is your Board of Directors in raising funds to assist the center? How frequently are they meeting?
Our Board of Directors-
How are they engaged with raising money?
Our Board of Directors normally meet once a month, because of some of the extenuating circumstances we've had right now. We usually meet the third Tuesday of every month, and I know they had mentioned maybe having someone from the city as a person on a board, which we, the board talked about, and we are more than welcome that, as a matter of fact, we used to have a liaison from the city that was, that did sit on the Yacht Center board. But yes, we have done fundraisers, people ask about that too, and yes, we have. The board was involved with all of those. Our very first fundraiser we did was our big draw that night, and we had a big dinner fundraiser, and it was probably about, we probably raised about $16,000, $17,000 that night with the Drifters, which was very good. That happened to be a sad time, because the night before the Drifters were performed, Dolly passed away, and so we lost all the yachts that day, and that was on Friday, our fundraiser was on Saturday, so it kind of put a little damper on the fundraiser, but the people did step out, and I had a heart attack the following Monday, so that was a wild weekend. But, or bad weekend, honestly, but we persevered. And then last year, we had a fundraiser with the Vineyard Junkies there. We tried to do our fundraiser, they interacted with the community. That was an outside event held the week before the 4th of July. And then this year, we had one planned, but that's had to be put on hold. So we've tried to do one annual, big annual fundraiser a year, and then throughout the year, we do solicit support from others. We are in the process of trying to nail, put together where the season package and donors, like some of the other theaters have. The first year, we couldn't do that field, because honestly, we didn't have anything to tell them about. The center had basically been closed, there were no shows, there were no performances. So it was hard that first year to go ask people for money for something that we thought might come to pass. But now that we have been there and people see what we are, now we are in a position now to go out and ask people to, for their donation support for our center, because we have performed and shown people that we do have an excellent production here.
Is it your responsibility there as the person seeking grants?
Yes, we have applied for some grants. We applied some from Gringle County. I think we're applying for some with the Metropolitan Arts Association now. We do not have a full-time grant writer. We have been looking into that, or outsourcing a grant writing for us. One of our staff girls, say, or she has applied for probably three or four grants just in the last six months. Some's with the county, some's different organizations, so we just have to go on the list and go down to fill out, but yes, we are applying for grants. And we did get the big grant from, from Lawrence Electric, which the city helped us with, with that grant from Lawrence Electric. So we did get a large grant from them, but that went totally, that grant was specified, so we couldn't use that for operations or productions. That grant was specified for building and updates, and so that had to go basically towards an HVA system, because it did not have HVA system in that back building. So that entire grant had to go, had to go to fund, to fund that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you, Phil.
All right. Sorry about that. I was muted. Any other council members? See, I don't see any. I don't have, Debbie, most of the questions have been answered from my, from my point of view as well. So talked about, I had a question about grant writing and board engagement. So thank you, Phil. And the rental income, which I think is not really prevalent in the application. So it's good to hear that you still have that available. As, and it's also, Mr. Cunningham, to your point, I do see the discrepancy between the zip codes. I do, I do hear Debbie's point though too, that, you know, these are, if we attract more people from out of town, they're much, folks who come from different zip codes are more likely to spend money in town beyond the price of a ticket. There's a lot of research around that. About $30 more in the economy above the ticket price goes into dinner or a babysitter or filling up gas or buying, buying a snack. So thank you for pointing that out, Debbie. But yeah, I don't really have any other questions for you. Does anyone else?
Thank y'all very much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Black, I guess is the chamber up next?
Yes, sir. Mrs. Ferguson, are you ready or do you need a minute?
Nope, I'm ready.
All right, you can go ahead whenever.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I appreciate your time tonight. I want to start by saying thank you for your support for the past few years as I adjust to this new role as president of the Fountain Inn Chamber. I realized the ask this year was a little higher than previous years. Basically wanted to present to you the complete of what it takes to run the chamber on a day to day basis as well as the visitor's center. So it is a large number, but I want to talk about tonight exactly, if I did receive funding from the city, what that funding would go towards as far as the chamber. So there's, there's two different areas I want to discuss. The first is running the visitor's center. Luckily, we have a beautiful office right here in the center of town with the museum. But there's a lot that goes into running that visitor's center. Not only running staff, but there's a lot of different aspects to the visitor's center. We've got the public restrooms here that we supply. All of the products for, utility bills for, we're open during all city events. We also have a new ATM here in the building. But also, the chamber takes on doing the relocation packets that people call in for when they're trying to relocate to Fountain Inn that we send out in the mail. We also do the newcomers guide. We spend better part of six months designing that magazine that is strictly for the community. And there's a lot that goes into putting that together. And we send that out to the entire community. We also, I started a program of the welcome bags. So when somebody moves into Fountain Inn, they are able to come into the chamber and pick up a welcome bag that is full of items from the different businesses in town. So they can have coupons and ideas of different things that we have here to offer. We're looking at more ideas. We want to bring more people here as we grow. Not only do we have the museum here, but we would like to be able to track the visitors that come from the different states, offer more items for Fountain Inn. So there's just a lot that goes into running the visitor's center. Carrie and I are really busy with the chamber. So with the funds, we would like to look at even bringing in a third staff member that could just strictly run the visitor's center as we look to grow this community and bring more people here so they can learn more about what Fountain Inn has to offer. The second thing that we would use the funding for would be our events. The chamber puts on a couple of different events that are huge for the community. The first one being Taste In, which is a new one that I designed last year. It took the place of our annual horse show. I wanted to do something a little different that was more geared towards our businesses and our restaurants. It focused on them. And that event closes down Main Street. It's a community dinner down Main. And it brings in a ton of people to just bring attention to what businesses we have here and the restaurants. So that funding going towards advertising for that event and trying to bring more people here to bring more money in for the hospitality tax, as well as Aunt Het, which is a fall festival that we've done here for 36 years since I was a little girl, and the Christmas parade. These events bring thousands of people to our city to spend their money, to bring income in for hospitality tax. Another thing that we did, that I brought in as a new president, was the Leadership Development Program, Leadership Golden Strip. So last year, we were able to donate the Splash Pad Park to the city, $125,000 project that will bring, will continue to bring people to our Main Street, mothers and families to play and, and then go and spend their money in the city. So multiple things that we're doing with that money. Last summer, we also did some billboards all over Greenville, some digital billboards that talked about, please come and eat and explore and shop Fountain Inn. With this funding, I would like to do more of that. Focus on bringing more people here to our community to see what we have here and to see the, how special our downtown is and to spend their money. So that's really what the ask is for, is to help with those two things. The visitor's center, running that as we grow. And then the events that we have, that we put on as a chamber. We look forward here at the chamber to continuing the relationship that we have, that we've been growing with the city. And I look forward to working together with you guys to restore our community after this difficult time that we've been going through. And then also want to just thank you for your time and consideration and see if you guys have any questions for me and our ask.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Anybody have any specific questions for the chamber this time? See anybody unmuting themselves or waving me down. Thank you. And you guys, what are the hours of the visitor's center outside of, you know, COVID?
Right now, we're 10 to 2, Monday through Friday.
Gotcha. And I know we'll ask this, I'll ask this to the museum too. But I know you guys sort of tag team on that a lot.
Yes, we do. Yeah, because we'd like to make sure that we're open for city events and anything that's happening in the city.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. I don't have anything. And Mr. Clemmer, do you have something?
Clemmer is unmuted. He has a question.
Okay, there you go. Mr. Clemmer.
Yes, Whitney, you mentioned the electronic billboards. Were those, were those in Greenville?
They were. They were on Woodruff Road and Pelham Road and Pleasantburg. And they were included in the packet that you received. I included a picture of what the billboard looked like. But it had pictures from our community and it invited people to come shop down and explore Fountain Inn. And those ran for a couple of weeks this summer.
Good. I missed that. I liked that idea.
I'd like to do more of that. I think that's very important, especially with how we're growing.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmer. I'm not seeing anyone else. So thank you, Whitney, for your presentation. Answered, I think you had all points that I have written down too. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Rubble, it's Mr. Cox, right, in the museum?
Hey, how's everybody tonight?
Doing good. Mr. Cox?
Thank you for. Okay, thank you for allowing me to speak to this esteemed group. I hope I can answer any questions you have and I hope I can present a decent, intelligent case. Before I begin, I would like to give you some statistics from last year. In 2019, the museum had a total of 7,231 visitors. And then looking at 2018, our total was 6,225. So that's roughly, we had an increase of 1,000 visitors during one year. Our best performance for visitors is usually during December because we're open during the carriage rides. And we always get an influx of people during that time. This past December alone, we had 2442 during that time. And as Fountain Inn grows, and I guess all the projection, or we're one of the high growth areas in the state, it's only going to help us have more and more people here. A little bit about museum. The traditional role for a museum is to collect objects and material of a cultural, religious, or historical importance. In addition to collecting these objects, a museum will reserve them, do research on them, and display them for education and enjoyment. The Fountain Inn Museum strives to not only fulfill these roles, but do much more. Some of our activities are, we have historical programs. We just recently completed a renovation on our back rooms and we are having a photo gallery in there. We had one photo gallery earlier, but we are working on something that's going to bring a lot of local interest because we're just going to staff it with local pictures. So that's, that's in the works right now. We had, last year, we had our first kids' day program. And we did that in the summer, giving the kids something to do in the summer. We plan on doing that again this year. We do have some offsite meetings, social meetings. And of course, we have our annual fundraiser, the gala, which is in October. The museum is also involved with the promotion and branding of Fountain Inn. We're often assisted, are offering assistance with the visitor's center. Sometimes we get people coming in here asking for directions or recommendations or all kinds of things. Sometimes people come in here and ask for, can you do research? Can you give me any pictures of this? Can you do this? Can you do that? And so we're all willing to do that. Our goal is to make our visitors feel welcome and ensure that they have a pleasurable and memorable visit with us. As in the past, the museum will also extend the opening hours to match any sponsored events such as Dancing on Depot, Bluegrass, the Aunt Het Day, Collard Greens Grizz. Anything that the city does, we try to match our hours to the city. And a lot of times, that's done with the volunteer staff because we want to capitalize on the people that are coming into city and show them a good time and show them what we have here. One exciting new project, and some of you probably already know about this, is the fact that we're involved in the acquisition of a historic mill. That's the old Jones Mills. It's down Jones Mill Road. It's a grist mill that's about 200 years old. The family that owns that is giving that to the museum in 8.3, roughly 8.3, 8.4 acres. We have plans that we would like to be able to get grants to get that grist mill restored and functional. We would like to have an open up of some nature trails there, even a picnic area. We think it would be a place like Haygood Mill we could even have. We could have a Bluegrass Concerts there. We could have Pioneer Day. We could have, you know, people maybe doing blacksmithing. And we can have all kinds of ideas we can do to make it an attraction for us. Now, the city has expressed an interest in even seeding that into the city limits. And we're receptive of that. The mill and the land will be donated by the Garrett family. And we don't expect that we're going to put any money out of the museum into that. We're hoping we can get everything through grants or private donations, fundraisers. But one thing that we have, all have in common, everything we do costs money. You know, we have expenses like everyone else here. This is where you can help us. We have submitted a request for our hospitality tax. And as a result, we hope we will be able to increase our hours of operation from part time to full time. Currently, we're open Thursday, Friday from 2 to 6 and Saturday from 9 to 2. And what we would really like to do is be open like five days a week. And we can assist Whitney and the chamber being the visitor's center and an information center during that time. A few months ago, we had a meeting with the mayor and the city administrator. And they did express a willingness to help us financially just so we could afford to have a full time administrator here. It looks like that's sort of gone out the window now with the current status and things that are happening now. But we hope we can recoup some of that and continue what our plans are to be, go ahead and be open for full time. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Any members of council have any questions? I don't, I don't see any. Mr. Cox, I just want to say, I like the, I went to the art opening that you guys had in the back with Mr. Nixon's work. And I think what you guys did in that back room is a, is a nice little addition for everything you guys offer. Always appreciate all of the work you guys do with your, with your programs and highlighting the history of Fountain Inn. And so that as, as we grow, people don't forget where we, where we came from. So I appreciate that.
I failed to mention that we just got a small grant to work, to do some renovation on that room. And we've had it painted and added some tractor lighting. We're about to purchase a suspension system so we can hang the photos properly, where they look a little more professional. That's one thing that works right now. You'll be hearing more about that soon.
Right. Thank you. Any other questions? I don't see any. So thank you, Mr. Cox. We greatly appreciate the time of you and all the other applicants for this age tax money. Hospitality tax is passed down to the consumer. It is mostly on a lot of our restaurant bills and other retail type bills. And its sole purpose can only go towards tourism related activity and supportive, and supportive tourism related activity and the infrastructure behind it. So, you know, these three entities, you know, definitely bring people into the city. So I appreciate you guys, you know, taking the time to apply and present to us.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Mayor, I'm going to change Whitney and Steve to attendees unless anybody has any other questions.
I don't see any.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
All right, Mayor, it is now just myself, Naomi, and City Council.
All right. So next on the agenda is the fiscal '20 budget amendment. Mr. Ballerney or Ms. Reed?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We are not asking council to vote on anything tonight. But we just wanted to put this in front of you a week or two in advance of our May council meeting. When a municipality adopts its annual budget, staff and our elected officials are projecting revenue and expenses. And, you know, typically, we do a pretty good job, but there's always a few thing, extenuating circumstances that come up throughout the year where some adjustments need to be made. Naomi and I like to go ahead and have an annual budget amendment towards the end of our fiscal year, just to make sure everything is, is in balance. And, and so that we don't have any budget actual variances as a finding on our audit or comprehensive annual finance report. And so this year, we have, we're proposing a budget amendment that increases revenue $405,900, but then also has those balanced with the expenditures of $405,900. Due to some of our residential growth, or a really unprecedented residential growth, certain revenue lines in, such as our fire service area taxes, our Lawrence County taxes, our Greenville County taxes, and our variance in rezoning fees, were all under budgeted. And so that all led to an increase of $290,000 in additional revenue. With the addition of $115,400 from our fund balance is how we get that total revenue increase to $405,900. On the expenditure side, we had, you know, one major purchase that we, that we made this year that was unbudgeted, which was the 800 radios. And we knew when we were. And we knew when we were approving that purchase during the council meeting that that was coming from fund balance. But then we also had a website audit performed. The results of that have come in and we're in a really good position now to be, to be able to go out for RFP, to have a new natural gas website and new city website. And then a few expenditure line items such as our payroll consultant fees. We didn't budget for ideal HR services to extend beyond September of 2019. So that went over. Also, our police and fire education incentive pay line, we didn't budget enough for that. We had a, we had a tremendous amount of police officers and firefighters take advantage of that incentive. And then in our special events marketing, we under budgeted there and, and with our internet expenditures. So in total, we're, we're only taking $115,400 out of fund balance. And, you know, the 800 radios were quite a bit more than that. And so this, this budget amendment just seeks to kind of clean all of that up and makes it look good for, for our upcoming audit. And you all will be asked to approve this budget amendment at first reading at our May council.
Thank you, Sean. Are there any, any questions? This is not any, an item to vote on, it's just for information, but if anyone has any comments or questions, it's a great time to do so.
I'm going to unmute Mr. Clemmer. He looks like he's trying to speak.
Yes.
There you go, Mr. Clemmer.
How, how did we miss the, the, the budget on the fire? Was that as a result of losing the Lawrence County funding?
No, I, I think that there has just been a tremendous amount of, of growth in that, in our fire service area. So that we under budgeted in the revenue side. And so we were, you know, pleasantly surprised with the, you know, more property tax revenue from our fire service area than, than we initially thought. That area, which goes well into unincorporated Greenville County is continually seeing more and more residences.
I can get with you later, I'm not sure that I understand, but that's fine.
Yeah, Sean, I had asked previously, because I noticed it when reviewing financials for our council meeting, but the, the internet expenditures, can you explain? Because I noticed every department had an overage on those, that particular item. But it was, can you kind of refresh my memory and for the benefit of everyone else, the reasoning behind that?
Within the last year or so, we took some steps with our IT provider, Acumen IT, to, to do some adjusting with our, with our servers and our internet providers. We basically are now running everything out of one server. And all of the facilities are kind of being fed into City Hall. And with that, we needed some redundant internet. So we have both Charter and AT&amp;T. So if one goes down, the, the whole city's operations aren't down. So the natural gas department and all of the, the software that they're using on a day-to-day basis, all of that's actually being run from the internet that comes into City Hall. And so that's why that needed to have some redundant internet, which is, is the main reason why that internet expenditure item for all the departments is, is higher.
Thank you. Any other questions from council members? I'm not seeing any. So if we want to move on to the next item, Mr. Bell, health insurance renewal?
Yeah, I just wanted to give a council an update on our process here for our fiscal year 2021 health insurance renewal. Currently, we have, this, this fiscal year, all of our employees have been with United Healthcare. It, it has, it has served us well, especially coming after what we experienced the, the previous year. But when we came time for, for renewals, they had a fairly significant increase in their, in their pricing that they gave us. And so our, our broker went out and sought quotes from other health insurance providers. The best quote that we got was from Blue Choice, which is a subsidiary of Blue Cross, Blue Shield. We had our health insurance broker provide a presentation to all of our department heads explaining the ins and outs of our, of our current healthcare program with United Healthcare, with it being a $500 per person deductible, $25 primary care co-pays, $50 specialist co-pays, and a $3,500 per person max out-of-pocket. And then kind of compared that with the, the quote that we received from Blue Choice. And then also compared that to what the state health plan is offering. And all three were, were very comparable, but the, the vast majority of our employees were, were in favor of going with Blue Choice. The, the deductible situation for, with this renewal is, is much better. It's $500 deductible, but 1,000 for, per family and a $3,500 out-of-pocket max, 7,000 family, same co-pays. And then because of Blue Choice coming in with a really, really good renewal quote for us, we were able to propose to city council for our upcoming budget that we increase the percentages that are, that the city pays for dependent healthcare coverage. So currently, the employee pays 98% of his or her healthcare. That's $9 a month. We would, we would continue with that, but currently employee spouse coverage, city is covering about 46%. Employee child, we're covering 62% and then family 55%. We are proposing that we increase all of those levels to, to 98% for the employee, to 64% for the employee spouse, 60% for both employee child and family. We have also decided to add a, a high deductible plan for our employees to choose as well. It's completely voluntary, but if the employee was to choose that one, they would still have the same network and co-pays and prescription costs as everybody else. But that deductible and that max out-of-pocket would be higher. However, the employee would pay nothing, that would be covered 100% by the city. And then those, those amount, those percentages for the dependent healthcare coverage would remain, it'd be 64%, 60 and 60. But the, the price for dependent healthcare coverage under the high deductible plan is much more reasonable for, for our families. So if there was an employee that wanted to cover his children who felt like that, you know, they're healthy, the main thing that they're going to use are those prescription benefits and, and, you know, going to the doctor and using those co-pays, then, you know, having them on, on the high deductible plan might make sense financially for that employee's family. And so we wanted to make sure that that was an option for our employees this year.
Thank you. Mr. Reed, you, well, first I'll ask if there are any other questions from council on this?
I think there is one right here from...
And Anthony has one as well.
Okay, yeah. My only concern is that, how credible is this insurance company? Because right now, we've been dealing with several insurance companies making us several promises. And it's like we going back and forth with different insurance companies. When I thought that the last insurance company had, we had, I thought it was legit, but then kind of found out it wasn't. So we, we still playing Russian roulette with these different insurance companies. Am I right for you?
So, so United Healthcare and Blue Cross Blue Shield are pretty much your only two options when it comes to a fully insured plan. Those are the plans that, that there would never be a problem with. The, the plan that the city had that, that we had some issues with was, was what they call partially self-funded or level funded. And, you know, that, we, we definitely have wanted to move away from that type of a plan in our current fiscal year. That's why we went to a fully insured plan in United Healthcare. And, and Blue Choice, being a subsidiary of Blue Cross Blue Shield, both of those are, are fully insured. And so there's, there's really no risk in, in going with a Blue Choice or a United Healthcare because they're, they're both fully insured.
I currently have Blue Choice with my employer. I've had it for seven years and I have not had an issue at all. It's a good, it's a good program, provider.
I'm with Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Well, it's a subsidy of Blue Cross Blue Shield. We use the same, even it says Blue Cross Blue Shield on the card, next to the Blue Choice.
I've had them before as well, before being on my wife's, with the school district.
I just want to make sure that we are...
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry, Mr. Cunningham.
I'm sorry. I just want to make sure that they are legit because we've been going back and forth with different insurance companies. And it seemed like we going back down the same road again. So I just want to make sure that we are going to stay with this one this time and go forward.
That was a concern I had too, Mr. Cunningham. And then after going through this, the process, I also had heard from employees about wanting to, you know, try to address especially that family, the family coverage and the, the amount that we're covering in dependents. And I think, and I don't know if it's in this or in a previous memo that Sean has sent around, this brings us in line a lot with some of the other municipalities near us in terms of the percentage that we cover for families and dependents. And it also reduces, it essentially reduces the cost across the board, except for the exception of it looks like employee child for our employees. It's not, but the family plan itself, it does decrease if you don't do the high deductible. I also, Mr. Reed, am I correct that this, Blue Choice, so United came in with an increase of like 13%? But the Blue Choice is, for the city, is actually a decrease of about 4%, which has allowed us to make those changes to dependent care?
That's correct. And you were right, our health insurance broker also provides those same services to, to cities of Malden and Simpsonville amongst others. But both Malden and Simpsonville are covering dependent coverage at around 67%. Two years ago, when I, when I first got here, City Fountain was covering 0%. And so in, in just two years, we've been able to, to make a pretty good stride. And, and I think, you know, after this year, especially if, if the renewal comes in well again next year, that we can continue to, to keep increasing those and at least match our, our peer communities at maybe around that 60%.
I mean, I'm fine with it. I just don't want us to keep going back and forth, have to pan out claims. And then people are, you got the museum saying they need money, you got the chambers need money. Everybody asking for money and then we have these claims comes up and it's going to put the city back into a bind again. That's all, I just want to make sure that we stay focused and keep the right track.
That's a good, that's a good question, Mr. Cunningham, and a good, and a good point, it's well taken. I also, to kind of help illustrate something else with this, the, the process behind this also, I think was important. I was concerned, just as, as you were, Mr. Cunningham, about switching back and forth and stuff. And I'd like to thank Naomi and Sean for laying out a process that they had Scott, our broker, present all of this to the department heads to get their buy-in. Because we didn't want to make a change without asking the employees for their input again, especially. As well as, I believe, there was an employee survey sent out asking them about, about their feelings on this. And so I think, I think we got the buy-in of our, of our staff and as far as, as far as I've heard. So that was a big piece to me too, because I didn't want to make this change without asking them. But that's a good point, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Mayor, Councilmember Derry Berry virtually has her hand... I don't, I don't know if she has a question or not. Okay, she's good.
And Naomi, this, we, this, I mean, we're, this, this works out financially for you. You also like how this is fitting into next year's budget? Because I know this will be a part of May's sort of budget process, but this, this fits in well?
Yes, we, Sean and I ran several scenarios just to make sure that we were staying in line and not giving too much to the percentage for employer coverage, but making sure that we did make some progress and some strides to, you know, helping the employees out while staying, while staying in budget. So yes, it does fit in to the budget that we will soon be proposing to council.
And we think if, given that this looks to be a better option for our employees, we may see growth in some, in people opting in for certain other levels. And I, I, I know, I know the answer to this that you've taken into consideration. Can you talk about taking that into consideration and, and everything?
Yes, we, just by taking the pulse or, or quick senses of our, of our employees, looked at who may put their family on coverage. It was actually a part of the survey that went out. All the results have not been compiled yet, but just hearing from other department heads, we did take that into consideration, the percentage increase of employees who have families who may put them on the coverage. I being one of them.
And I, and I think that's a good point, Mayor, in that, you know, as, as we continue to, to want to help our employees by increasing those, those percentages, we could, can, like next year, have a, have a really good renewal, maybe a decrease in our overall premiums again. But if we were to, you know, to continue increasing that employer percentage, which we want to do, that could in turn have a lot of additional people on our, on our plan, which just costs more money, which is, you know, I, I think there's a, there's a healthy balance there. I think if we can get somewhere in that 67 to 70%, I, I think is, is a good number for us. That, that won't cause, you know, just, you know, everybody to leave their current plan and join, join the cities, but, but still to where it's affordable for the employee as well.
I agree.
Mr. Clemmer, he has his hand virtually raised as well.
Yeah, and just real quick question. So our current, with this new program, our supplement is going to be 63%?
So it depends on, so if you're, if it's employee only, that we pay 98%.
Right.
If it's employee spouse, we, we would pay 64%. If it's employee child or family, we would pay 60%.
Good, I, I like, I like the fact that we need to get, to continue to be competitive with, with other municipalities that are continuing to seek good employees and find them from us. That's important. Thank you.
Sure.
I think Mr. Cunningham has a question.
Sean? Now, last year, when we went through this, all this problems with the health insurance, was it Blue Cross or, or Blue, Blue Cross Blue Shield that said they would insure us and then came back shortly after that and said no?
That is correct. And that was, that was due to them feeling like they didn't have adequate claims data from the, from the health insurance provider program that we were on before. You know, when it went defunct, they, they weren't able to give good claims data. And so they got, they, Blue Choice got, got spooked at that time and, and backed off. But Scott has confirmed multiple times that this renewal is, it's set in stone. We've already filed the paperwork. We're going to be sending the information out to our employees here soon for, to begin open enrollment here in, in May. So it's, they're not backing out on us this time. And again, because of that, the poor claims data we had from the last one.
Okay. And then the other question was that, what was the deal with the state and their insurance program? I know it was expensive and there was a waiting period, but is that off the table now?
You know, when we, we presented the option and all the details of the state health plan to our employees. And, you know, on the, on the city side, I think that a couple of things that were a deterrent. One was there's, there's a $10,000 non-refundable application that... One was there's, there's a $10,000 non-refundable application, um, that, uh, that you'd have to pay. Also, there's a six-month, uh, lead time process. So if we, uh, you know, turned in our application with the $10,000 and, and we were accepted into it, um, we wouldn't be able to get onto the state health plan for another six months. Uh, but I think really the, the main thing that came down to it was, uh, uh, you know, our, whether it's the United Healthcare or our Blue Choice in, uh, when we go to the doctor now, we pay that $25 copay and that's it. Um, with the, with the state health plan, um, it, it works a little bit different. Um, you, you pay a, a fee at, at the doctor's office, but then later on, you actually get billed for a percentage of that office visit. Um, and, and so at the end of the day, the out-of-pocket costs to the employee was actually going to be greater, um, with the state health plan. Now, they mandate, uh, a certain percentage that the city has to pay for dependent healthcare coverage. And so the dependent healthcare coverage piece from the state health plan i- is much cheaper, uh, for, for the employee. Um, the, uh, the total premium for the employer i- is roughly the same, but I think that, that main piece there is that out-of-pocket, uh, expense that, uh, the employees would see every time either, either them or their, their spouse or children went to the doctor. Getting a $150 bill afterwards, um, is, is, could potentially even create a situation where employees stop going to the doctor. Um, and so I think right now, you know, it's, you know, having only a $25 copay and that's it. I, I, I think that, that lends itself to our employees, making sure that they, they stay healthy and, uh, and are getting all of their things taken care of.
We have no, um, assurance though, that in coming years that we will have that same arrangement.
No, I think it's something that we ought to look at, um, especially since there's a six-month waiting period. I, I think, um, you know, this Blue Choice would start for us July 1. I think we should continue to, we should look at seeing how that's going for, for everyone. And then if, uh, if we really do want to make that move to the state health plan, um, just getting, getting the ball rolling earlier on, probably by September, October, getting that application in and then, uh, uh, you know, then we'd be ready to go by that following July 1.
That makes sense. Uh, one final question now. This is the, um, first meeting on the budget. We're going to have to have it finalized within about a month. Is this the last meeting a council's going to have, uh, together?
No, I was actually going to talk about our budget, uh, timeline at our, uh, during my city administrative report. Um, eh, unless there's any other questions on, on the health insurance renewal, I don't mind moving into that.
Well, my only question, last question, and I've, I've been finished, is that I would like to have us all together physically when we talk about this, when we start to make a vote on it. Um, even prior to that, because I got some things I need to think about on that.
On, on the budget?
There are others too.
Or on healthcare?
I'm sorry, on, on the, uh, entire city budget.
Gotcha. All right, perfect.
Yeah, I just had one comment on the healthcare thing and then it's trying, we can pivot to your report unless there's another question, but, uh, John, also to your point about the state plan and comparison, I was able to jump on that, uh, call with Scott when he presented it to all of the department heads and he laid out the differences between all of them. Uh, and it wasn't just department, some of them had their, you know, uh, like Lori was there from Public Works as well as Roger. Uh, and I remember getting some feedback from, because I asked employees to let me know, you know, how, what, what do you think? I remember getting feedback that, that out, out-of-pocket piece, like if you go to the doctor, you only pay the 25 and that's it, as opposed to paying 14 under the state plan and getting a bill later, which I live every day now under my wife's school district plan, uh, is, uh, was a surprising piece that they, they thought might be, uh, might be beneficial to, to, to a good number of employees. That may not be the case for every single employee, but for the majority, uh, it's, it sounded like, uh, that was in a, that was a piece for them.
Okay. That's fine. All right. Uh, well, I'll just jump right into, uh, the budget timeline. Uh, Naomi and I met today to, to discuss, uh, the, uh, the COVID-19 situation has staff really taking an extra look at, at our revenues. Um, you know, cities all across the state are projecting, uh, decreases in certain revenue lines anywhere from 25 to 75% um, for, for the, for the upcoming fiscal year. And so that, that's kind of making us, you know, take a step back, look at that, and then anytime you start adjusting, uh, revenue line items that much, you, you're going to need to start, uh, reevaluating your expenditures as well. Um, we, we would plan or, or like to plan to have a, a budget work session, uh, next Thursday, uh, May 7th, uh, at, at 6:00 PM. Uh, I think we would do that virtually again. Um, we, we would try to cover as many departmental budgets as, as we, as we can have completed and ready for you all. Um, and then the following week have our, have our regular city council meeting in May and just handle our, our normal, uh, May course of business. Um, and then have our public hearing and first reading of the budget on May 28th. Um, and then with a, a June 4th budget work session where we could all, uh, meet in person and hopefully once again. I, 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 I'm pretty confident in that, uh, by June 4th, we should all be able to, to meet in person. I know there are, uh, cities around the state that are going to be, again, having, uh, in-person council meetings again here in, uh, in the middle of May. Uh, and then having our regular June council meeting on June 11th, uh, and having second and final reading of the budget. Does, does that altered budget timeline seem okay to everybody? Does that?
Yeah. Let me just ask the question, Sean, because I'm, I'm showing a workshop on May 21st. Is that what you said? I'm sorry, I was.
No, we, we would, uh, we would cancel that. We could keep it if we, if we needed to.
Okay.
But we would have our budget work session next week on May 7th.
Okay.
Have our regular council meeting on the 14th.
Right.
But that, uh, public hearing and first reading of the budget would be on May 28th.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Clemmer, that, uh, that May 21st one was our optional hold, uh, on the original budget calendar. So everyone should probably have it on there, but that's, it wasn't one that was like set in stone, so it, we can get it around.
And that, uh, that, that be, that May 21st begins the weekend of Memorial Day weekend. Um, you know, I, I don't know what that's going to look like for everybody nowadays, but there, there could be some travel. Um, and, and so, uh, I think pushing that off, uh, and just not having it on the 21st might make some sense for us.
Uh, it'd be full council on the 28th, correct?
Correct. And that would be up to council as to, uh, as to whether or not we wanted to do an in-person, uh, meeting. We, the, uh, the plan for our May 14th regular council meeting would still be to have it virtually via Zoom. Um, but, uh, uh, you know, hopefully the, the May 28th, uh, we would be able to do that here in our council chambers, um, and then definitely for the June 4th and June 11th meetings.
And Sean, if this was a ta- a, a piece for your report, but I'll, I'll ask it now with, uh, for you and Naomi, or Naomi, what, um, when do we sort of get a clearer pic? And we're not going to get a totally clear picture, but when do we start sort of starting to understand the impact COVID is having? Is that one, later in this month or May?
Um, I updated Sean this afternoon and I believe he's had some information for you all in his report. Um, and so do you, you want to do your report, Sean, or how do you want to?
Yeah, I, I'll just say, um, you know, first I'd like to talk about our March 2020 hospitality tax collections. Um, so we ended up collecting, um, $33,175. Um, and to put that into, into context, uh, February's was $33,950, um, and January 2020 was $34,058. Um, so a, a slight decline, uh, but definitely not severe. Um, I'd also like to add that three of our restaurants have yet to report their gross receipts, um, for, for March 2020. If, if they had even just an average month, if we were to add those collections in, um, March 2020 would probably be higher than, uh, than February and Januaries. Um, it's definitely lower than, uh, than March of 2019. Our March 2019 was actually our best hospitality tax month for that entire fiscal year. That was just over 41,000 collected, um, that month. Um, but I, I really think that the, the better gauge is going to be the April hospitality tax collections and those reports aren't due to the city until May 20th. Um, so, so we're just really not going to know how well our, our restaurants did or, or didn't do in, in April until then. Um, and then if, if hopefully if things start opening up, then, uh, May's hospitality tax, uh, collections will, will likely be, uh, similar to, to March in that being lower, uh, but not, uh, substantially lower.
And then beyond hospitality tax, I, I prepared a document that I was, we're still working on, um, for the May 7th meeting, if that's, if we're going to continue in that direction, um, just identifying the major revenue, um, sources to the city, the property tax, business license, our local government fund, local option sales tax, our building and zoning, um, fees, court fines, utilities, franchise fees, and then finally ending with the impact on our expenditures and cash flow. That way council has a better idea on what the impact of COVID-19 is on Fountain Inn. Um, I don't really feel prepared right now to give specific numbers, but I will have this document complete and sent to, to Sean and, and raised review and finally to council for you all, for you as well.
For, for hospitality tax, we budgeted, uh, 418,000, uh, collected, uh, for this fiscal year. We are, we're not going to hit that, uh, number, but it's not going to be severely lower. Um, it, it'll probably be a little bit under, uh, that 400,000 mark. Uh, as far as, uh, uh, business license, I, I don't remember exactly what we budgeted, but we, we are, we are on pace to meet that. Um, business license revenue came in very well, uh, for the city. Um, surprisingly, as many, many businesses have already renewed. Um, today was the, was the original deadline. Um, they have until June 20th, uh, to, to renew their business license without penalty, but the vast, vast majority have already done that and, and we're, we're on pace to, to meet our projected budget numbers for that. Um, you know, a couple of items that are going to be, uh, an issue potentially with COVID-19 are if we end up having to cancel our baseball and softball season, um, we would have to refund about $26,000. Um, that, that would be a, a pretty significant hit. Um, but, but overall, uh, you know, most of our revenues have all, uh, have already either already, already been collected or going to meet budget.
Our court fines, um, we identified that as well this afternoon as, um, experiencing a, a decline as court disclosed through June.
I guess, do you suspect, Naomi, that what will be sort of the structure of the May 7th one, you and Sean? Um, will it be more of a deep dive into stuff like this or we won't? Or will it be more budget focused since we won't have a ton of information in, in seven days?
Um, we talked about, uh, focusing on departmental reports, um, and, and going through the budgets by department and also to take into consideration the impact of, of any future revenues or expenditures as a result of this, um, virus.
Thank you.
All right. Um, I, I'm kind of hopping around a little bit here, but, um, a, a few updates on, on the city's status. Uh, wanted to let everybody know that our drive-through window at the Found In Natural Gas building office is now, now back open. Um, it's still not, uh, the building itself is still not open to the public, um, but they have started accepting payments again through the, through the window. Uh, while still not open back up to the public, starting tomorrow, a few of our, uh, city hall employees are going to be, uh, coming back and, uh, and starting to work here on site as opposed to being at home. We're going to, the, the plan is to start bringing them back gradually. Um, we, we'll be scheduling another round of sanitizing all of our facilities soon. Um, wanted to let everybody know about our virtual concert, uh, that we have coming up tomorrow and Saturday. Since we had to postpone, uh, the in-person 14th annual Macarons Cornbread and Collard Greens Blues Festival, uh, some of the bands in Mac Arnold will be holding a virtual concert, which will be streamed on the city's Facebook page, uh, tomorrow and Saturday at 7:00 PM. And then, uh, on Saturday, May 9th at 3:00 PM, uh, we're going to be holding a parade for a boy named Mason, who is autistic and lives over in Eagle Watch. He is, uh, turning three years old and, uh, because of, uh, the virus restrictions, we can't, uh, his family is unable to give him a, a, a typical three-year-old birthday party. And so the community, uh, is giving him his own parade and our police and fire and public works departments of all plan to participate with, uh, with our vehicles. And I think we have some council members that are going to be riding their, their motorcycles and, uh, uh, the parade's going to start over at Garrett's Golf Carts and it's going to end at his house over on Flannery Court. Um, he loves cars, trucks, tractors, basically anything that has, has wheels and can drive. And so we're, we're just trying to help spread the word to our community. Um, uh, and I, I think that's going to be a really, really special thing for him.
That's really cool. Like that.
Um, over at the municipal court parking lot, our engineers have asked Panagakis to put us on their schedule for next week. Um, before the pretty heavy rain yesterday, uh, they had determined that the, the stone was pretty much as dry as it's going to be. Uh, and so we, we, we think we're going to go ahead and move forward if it, as long as we don't get a ton of rain here in the next week, that should be paved soon. Um, we talked about the budget timeline. Um, wanted to let everybody know that the, kind of the, the first portion of our wayfinding signage project, um, which are the welcome signs at 418, uh, around Fairview Street and South Main have been installed. I think they look really good. Um, they, uh, we ha- we still have to get electricity to all three of those sites. Um, they, um, uh, we put some uplighting, uh, for, for all of those welcome signs, but , uh, they didn't already have electric there, so we have to do that. Um, and then over at the Manuel Sullivan Sports Complex, all of the parking lot lights have now been installed. Uh, so I believe other than some security cameras and a few other IT, uh, type of, uh, items, everything there at that park is, is now complete. Uh, looking forward to, to when we can actually use it again.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any questions or comments for Mr. Bell on anything? I don't see any. Uh, so that, uh, thank you, Mr. Bell, thank you, Naomi, for your hard work with the budget process and all the question marks that are out there right now. Um, and, uh, I think those who gave the presentations today, uh, and it sounds like, uh, I guess Sean, you'll confirm with everybody via email on those dates, but it sounds like we'll have a budget workshop next week, um, before, uh, we'll sit, uh, before our regular council meeting on the 14th and then a special called on the 28th. The 28th will actually be the first reading on the budget itself. Um, and then we'll, and then possibly another one in June, followed by the final reading, June 14th or something, give or take, June 11th. All right. Uh, is there, uh, any other business and not seeing any? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmer.
I mean.
At the time, uh, all those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, the ayes have it. We now stand adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.